This is the City of Iowa City formal meeting on March 7, 2023. We're going to start with roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
All right, well, we are missing one councillor tonight. That's councillor John Thomas. And I want to say thanks to Mayor Pro Tim for allowing me to be away last Tuesday while I was on my honeymoon. So you did a great job. I critiqued every second of the past council meeting.
I expect the notes afterwards.
Yes, all right. Welcome to everyone that is present or online watching. This is your City Hall, and so welcome to you in person. We're going to start with item number one. I'm sorry, item number two, which is our two through six, which is our consent calendar. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Dunn.
Second, Taylor.
All right. Anyone from the public like to discuss an item that is on our consent calendar? Seeing no one in person or online, roll call, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed, a six to zero. Item number seven is community comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to come and speak about anything that is not on our agenda tonight. If you would like to come forth, please come to the podium at this time. This is for anything that is not on our agenda. And you'll be given up to three minutes, which there is a clock below. Welcome.
Welcome. Yeah, all right. Well, thanks for having me. My name's Steve Grismore. I'm a longtime resident of Iowa City. I've been here since 1979. I live on Abbey Lane on the west side of town, and I'm here concerned about the narrowing of our street.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. That is item nine B on our agenda today.
Yes.
Should I sit down?
Yes, we'll be back. Yep, yes, thank you. Sometimes it's a little confusing. We get it. Anyone else want to speak on an item that is not on our agenda? Seeing no one, we're going to move on to item number eight, which is planning and zoning matters. Eight A is rezoning North Dodge Street and North Scott Boulevard. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 3.87 acre of property located south of the North Dodge Street and North Scott Boulevard. Intersection from commercial office zone to community commercial zone with a planned development overlay for approximately 2.05 acres and to low-density multifamily residential with a planned development overlay for approximately 1.83 acres. And can I get a motion to give second consideration?
So moved. Alter.
Second, Dunn.
All right. Moved by Alter, seconded by Dunn. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passed, a six to zero. Item nine is going to be regular formal agenda items. Nine A is the sale of 2021 Taylor Drive. Resolution authorized in conveyance of a single-family home located at 2021 Taylor Drive. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome Tracy Heishu.
Hi. I'm here for the conveyance of 2023, sorry, 2021 Taylor Drive. As you know, we've had the South District program for a couple of years. We have sold, well, we have rehabilitated and purchased six units. This represents the sale of the fifth unit to an eligible home buyer. We have one remaining that is ready. It's been rehabilitated and is for sale right now. We purchased this duplex back in 2021, and you can see by the photos, you can see the bottom photo is the before photo. After rehab is the second, and it's the one on top. The property sustained major fire damage, so the whole unit has been gutted and rehabilitated. The city partnered with Climate Action to provide several energy-efficient improvements. You'll see in the next slide, we've installed solar panels, we added insulation, we upgraded HVAC to an air-source heat pump, and we made several other improvements. This home also benefited from a bunch of community partnerships. We partnered with the Student Built House Program, with the school district, and the Home Builders Association to provide opportunities for our local high school students to learn about the construction trades. They built storage sheds for each home that's in the backyard of each lot. They cited the home, and then they completed some interior carpentry projects. This home was also the site of the Home Improvement Confidence Course for Women sponsored by Kirkwood and the Home Builders Association. So it provided an opportunity for women who were interested in learning about the construction trades to be part of the project. They worked on flooring and finished carpentry. The home will sell for $155,000. Part of this includes $25,000 through our home down payment assistance and $35,000 through our rehabilitation. It's a silent mortgage, conditional mortgage. If the owner remains in the home for 10 years, both loans are forgiven. The buyer only needs to finance the remaining amount. So to buy this home, they only need to finance about $95,000 through a private lender. It's a two-bedroom home with a bathroom and then additional living space in the basement. The buyer is a first-time home buyer under 80% immediate income. They have completed the education course and counseling through Horizons. In addition, the buyer grants the city a mortgage to secure the agreement that the home remain owner-occupied for 30 years. This is the first resident that was not part of the neighborhood. The home was available for the neighborhood for several months. We opened it up to anybody that was income-eligible to purchase the property. I'm happy to report that we are partnering with Horizons for Intro to Homeownership in order to increase the number of people that'll be eligible, either that have potentially applied and just weren't able to proceed, or are voucher holders that can convert their vouchers into homeownership. We have our first class tomorrow. We have, it's a full class, about 20. We have 60 others on our waiting list, so we're working with Horizons to schedule those on a monthly basis until we meet the need that's out there. And we still have 2129 that's available right now for $147,000. That's a three-bedroom home.
Any questions? I don't hear any. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? If so, come forth. And there is a sign-in sheet there, or you can put that in the basket. There's stickers in the back. Oh, okay, all right. Seeing no one in public or online, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to give first, could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Alter, council discussion.
I'd like to thank you, Tracy, for all of your efforts, especially in the South District. And I'm just so excited to see this and the sale of this, because I know, as you know, there was a lot of doubt in the community and amongst people about this whole project and that it wouldn't work and that there wouldn't be applicants. But obviously, this shows that it was successful and it is affordable, more affordable than $300,000 or $400,000 homes. So thank you for all that effort, and congratulations to the new homeowner.
Super exciting program. Happy to see one other one being sold and at an affordable rate, truly affordable rate. All right, roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passed, a six to zero. Item nine B is Roeritz South Trunk Sanitary Sewer. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Roeritz South Trunk Sanitary Sewer Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome.
Joe Alter with Engineering. So this project is located in the southwest side of the city. We analyzed four routes leading up to the selected route that we picked. Those four routes were presented during the first and second public information meetings, which were in July and May of this last year. The route selected is shown in green. On the west side of Mormon Trek Boulevard, it follows an existing 30-foot-wide permanent easement, which was established with the Mormon Trek Village in 1996. And on the east side of Mormon Trek, it goes straight down the middle of Abbey Lane. That was selected on that side because it was the least disruptive to the neighborhood. The project includes a 30-inch trunk sewer, which will connect the west side of Highway 218 to the city's collection system. So it's approximately one-half a mile of pipe that we're putting in. About 400 feet will be trenchless under the Highway 218. The work is within right-ofways and easements, some permanent easements, some temporary construction easements. The project will utilize an existing right-ofway and the existing 20-foot-wide permanent easement along the south side of Abbey Lane from Kiwanis Park to Mormon Trek Boulevard. Permanent easements and temporary construction easements and the highway right-ofway will be used west of Mormon Trek Boulevard. Abbey Lane will be reconstructed after reconnecting private services and the restoration of the street pavement, driveway aprons, sidewalk. We'll be updating curb ramps with this project and some other public utilities, including some minor water main reconfiguration of valving and hydrants. The areas east of Mormon Trek Boulevard will have sodding. Some of the areas west of Mormon Trek Boulevard will have sod. A lot of it past the little horseshoe there that's on the village that will have seeding. And some of that seeding will have to occur in the spring of 2024. So one of the things that we spent a lot of time figuring out is how to accommodate the residents and the owners in the corridor. So we have, in addition to instructing the contractor to backfill each day and to work with residents, getting them in and out of their driveways, we're also restricting the contractor to a 500-foot limit of disruption. So they're only going to be able to pave 500 feet at a time. That's one of the biggest time periods when we cause disruption to the neighborhood is when we go to repave. There's three to seven days when the concrete needs to cure, and so we wanted to make sure that we're not repaving the whole street all at once. So we're going to put that into segments. Another really good thing for the neighborhood on both sides of Mormon Trek is the local collection sewer that's there now will be abandoned and filled. So a lot of the neighbors have a manhole lid in their yard. Those will be abandoned below grade, and they won't be visible to the neighborhood anymore. So that's a real nice benefit to them. One of the impetus of this project is obviously to promote development on the west side of Highway 218, south of Rarot Road and north of Highway 1, so that, I'm just showing the southwest district, there's nothing particular. This was presented at a different meeting for that. But I want to press upon the council, this is from the 2011 Sewer System Master Plan, that this pipe, which is located right here on this drawing, will get extended and have collection serving it all the way out to Kansas Avenue. So this is decades' worth of development that is contingent on us getting this sewer underneath the highway. It includes much of the future 965 corridor, which will be part of Iowa City eventually. So one of the things that happens in design is iterative. We don't end up with the design on day one that we want. We work through that. So we try to have informational meetings with the owners and residents and those that are interested from the public at different milestones. So we had a 30% meeting, like I said, in May last year, and we had a 60% design meeting in July. And at that time, we were primarily concerned with the route that we were going to take and how the trunk sewer was going to operate. We hadn't gotten to all the details of how the street was going to be redesigned, how the intersections were going to work, all those kinds of things. Those are usually details that come later on. You don't want to spend a lot of the consultant's time putting all those details together before you figure out where are you going to put the sewer and how that's going to work. So when it was determined last late summer that we really went to a complete reconstruction on Abbey Lane, so there was, again, four different alternatives with routes and different things that we were analyzing throughout that time period, but it became clear that we were going to take out 80%, 90% of the concrete on Abbey Lane. And so we decided in the fall to have a third public information meeting, which was not part of our original plan, but really felt like we needed to reach back out to the public, the owners and the residents, to tell them that we were going to have a change in the sense that the standard roadway width for a residential street is 28 feet wide. And so we wanted to be able to interact with them, and so we had the meeting in late November, and then asked them to give us comments into the middle of December before we proceeded with the final design. This standard roadway width, this is our residential, local residential roadway width, which is 28 feet with parking on both sides or 26 feet with parking on one side. So an interesting thing, though, is that this Abbey Lane was originally named Aber Avenue. It was 36 feet wide, just like Aber is on the other side of Kiwanis Park. It was intended as an arterial connection between Sunset Street and Mormon Trek Boulevard. Well, obviously, that never happened. When Kiwanis Park was built, the road was never connected through. So when it became apparent that we were going to have a complete street reconstruction, we decided to go with our normal standard residential width of 28 feet. All of the streets that connect to Abbey, Dolan, Kai, and Burry are all 28 feet wide. So this project, the sewer, as well as the reconstruction of the corridors that we're going through, meets several strategic plan objectives in our strategic plan. First of all, mobility to design, maintain complete streets that are comfortable and safe for all users, and grow and prioritize bike and pedestrian accommodations. It also supports the future development, as I said, on the west side of Highway 218, which meets one of the economic objectives. There's other benefits to having the standard roadway width. This is not the reason that the standard roadway width was used. 28 feet is our standard. So these are just extra ancillary things that are also beneficial for using that 28-foot width. So first is there's a lower cost of construction when we're actually constructing it, eight-foot less of concrete. There's also a lot of reduced maintenance over the lifecycle, less area to plow, less area to seal, less area to maintain if the concrete has an issue. There's reduced materials and less impervious surfaces. Those support both goals in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, as well as the Strategic Plan, as I mentioned before. We also have looked for different ways to slow traffic down, and we've tried many different traffic calming methods around the city. One of the concepts is the fact that narrower streets with parking on both sides is going to equate to lower vehicular speeds on that road. And so this standard width of the street, it supports the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists and vehicles by promoting traffic calming and slower speeds. So one of the things that we heard from residents, several residents were very concerned about reducing the width of the street. There was also residents that were very supportive of having that narrower width. And so it's not universal across the board that all the owners and residents were in agreement about that. Regardless, it is our standard, 28 feet or 26 feet. There was several other things that we heard. We heard a lot from the neighborhood about how important their trees are. It's a beautiful neighborhood, large trees shaded, it's a gorgeous corridor. And so one of the things about having an increased parkway, four foot on each side, as the trees in the neighborhood are aging out, it's really going to give us a lot of opportunities to have a more diverse canopy and tree selection when we're going to plant new street trees, either on the north parkway or the south parkway. Several of the neighbors also express their concern about fall leaf storage. The parkway right now is very narrow, and so that extra space in the parkway is going to give more storage for leaf storage, which often is pouring out into the street or into the sidewalk. The last thing about the increased parkway, and this supports a lot of discussions that we've had as staff, as well as your objectives that you've put into the strategic plan, as well as our complete streets policy, is that that larger buffer space, that more parkway, is going to create more safety between the vehicles and the road and pedestrians and bicyclists that are using the sidewalk. Whoa, really touchy. So one thing that came up after we had submitted plans to the clerk and set the public hearing, we heard a lot of concern about parking for the park and how turnaround at the end of the park was going to work. And so we actually worked with the consultant and changed our plans in that meantime to make sure that we had a transition, we're not taking out concrete that doesn't need to be taken out. And so as you can see from this depiction, we basically left that 36-foot-wide road at the end to allow for parking and turning around. The estimated construction costs are $3,475,000. This is funded by revenue bonds. So our schedule, we are looking to move forward hopefully with bidding this month and awarding early next month. We have a set start date in mid-May with a substantial completion date in the middle of November. That would be the point where the corridor would be completely reusable for the public. Those items that would remain for the spring of '24 would be those areas of seeding. It would be past the end of September. We can't seed, so we'd have to wait till the following spring to do some of that seeding. That's all I have. Thanks to Stranz and Associates for their design on this project and their hard work in pivoting many times and helping us get this design where it's at today.
Any questions? Sure.
If I can make one clarification, Mayor, we originally planned to fund this project with revenue bonds, but we're actually going to be using wastewater fund balance to do that. So just a source of funding change, the dollar amount's the same.
Okay.
So the late change or late lack of change to the 36-foot by Kiwanis Park, that didn't impact the project's overall budget?
No.
Just it was a matter of saying, here's the need, and we're able to...
Yeah, it really didn't change, didn't change the budget that much. It was a relatively small section of the roadway. We're not installing sewer there, so we didn't need to, the end of the sewer is west of Burry, so we didn't really need to be over in that area, and it didn't really make sense to change it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, you can come to the podium at this time. There is a, yeah, this will be your time. There is a sign-in sheet that is on the podium that you'll need to sign. There are also stickers in the back of the room that you can fill out ahead of time as well. We'll ask that you give your name and the city you're from, and then we ask that you keep your, well, I'll allow up to three minutes for comments. Welcome.
Hi. Let's try again.
Yes.
My name's Steve Grismore. I'm a resident of Iowa City. I have my sticker in here. So I agree with this gentleman. It's a beautiful street. It's a beautiful neighborhood. My wife and I bought our house 12 years ago on a beautiful street in a beautiful neighborhood, and the street's 36 feet wide. I'd like it to stay 36 feet wide. That's what I bought. I mean, obviously, it's the city street, but that was the aesthetic that I liked. Plus, talking about the park, the street's only two and a half blocks long. There might be some people that are afraid of speeders. I don't see it. I live there. It's not true. It's two and a half blocks. You can only go so fast, trust me. There are some people that go up the hill that go a little fast once in a while, but overall, the street's not a dangerous street. Matter of fact, at 36 feet wide, when you're riding your bike, which I ride a lot in the summer, it's much safer because I don't have to worry about cars. There's plenty of room to always pass the people on the street. So those are a couple just basic aesthetic things about living there that I really like. The other thing is, is I totally agree with, you know, you're placed in the sewer, there's going to be a lot of inconvenience. My wife and I are both music people. I'm a retired professor in the University of Iowa School of Music. I teach a lot of lessons at my house. My wife teaches a lot of lessons at her house. Some students park in our driveway, but we also have parking on the street. And I have, in my basement of my house, I have a big music room where I have band rehearsals, and people show up, and there may be five or six cars parked on my street, including the mayor's. He's been in my basement. He knows what I'm talking about. And so, you know, this is the kind of thing that we do there, and it would just be nice to not have to deal with that. Plus, I don't know how it affects my taxes. I guess they're not supposed to change anything like that. I don't know. But an extra four feet of parking to mow, I don't have issues with raking my leaves on the space we have. It seems to have worked fine for my last 12 years. We've never had any problems. I mean, a few leaves in the street, I guess, I don't know. So, you know, I understand the kind of idea of the 28-foot thing, but I just, I think it's kind of unfair to us who've been there forever to all of a sudden have this change made. And I understand there were some, I didn't know about this in the first run. We heard about it, and then we all started talking more about it. So in fairness to the city, I think maybe some people were trying to tell us, but you know how that kind of thing can happen. So anyway, yeah, those are my basic concerns. You know, it's just unfortunate, and I just feel it'll kind of devalue what we have now. That's just my opinion. A lot of great neighbors, some of them are here. I've got to know them all. We have a great neighborhood there. And not everybody agrees with us, but the majority of people on the street do agree with us. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address this topic? Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My name is Mary McIdes, and I'm also a resident of Abbey Lane. And I'll have to look at my notes because my palms are sweating, and...
And if you can use the mic, please?
Oh, certainly. I'm here to appeal to City Council to also not narrow Abbey Lane after the sewer reconstruction project. We all agree that the sewer needs to happen. That's not the issue. But as Steve mentioned, we bought our homes, we love our neighborhood, and we bought into it as it is. And regarding this project, I would say that there was not much transparency as far as the street narrowing was concerned. We received an orange postcard dated November 21 of 2022 saying that there would be a Zoom meeting on November 30 regarding the sewer project. There was not one word mentioned in that postcard about the street being narrowed. Also, there were five or maybe six people that attended that Zoom meeting, and I think it was because we had heard about the sewer project, had no idea that the sewer, that the sewer, that the street narrowing was coming up. So those five or six, of those five or six people that were there, my husband was one of them, and we started talking about the street narrowing. And it's like, where is that coming from? You know, our street is unique in that at the end of our street is Kiwanis Park, and that park is highly utilized, and there is not a parking lot on our side of the park. A lot of people park. A lot of people park on the street to attend the park. And so, what you're doing is taking away parking that is used by the people that are going to the park. So, anyway, what we have is working for us, and it's working for us well. And also, as Steve mentioned, and four weeks ago at your last city council meeting, I believe in your packet, there was a petition that was signed by 20... It was either 20 or 21 people. There are 23 addresses on Abbey Lane, is my understanding. I may have that maybe off by one or two, but 21 people had signed that petition. So, obviously, the large majority of people do not want the street narrowed. And so, it's like, it looks like this is what's happening according to those plans. But I am appealing to you, and the first two rows of people that are sitting here are from Abbey Lane and are in support of the street not being narrowed. And so are the majority of the other people that aren't here. So, as Steve mentioned regarding bikes. Bikes use the street to get to the trail that is also in Kiwanis Park. And I have 13 seconds left. So, how much concrete savings will there be? Each and every driveway will have to be elongated if the street is narrowed on both sides. So, that's a lot of concrete going on right there. So, anyway...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yep. Welcome.
Hello. My name's Kevin Watkins. I live on Abbey Lane also. Thank you very much for the chance to speak with the council again. I'm here to talk about the Rarrett South Trunk Sanitary Sewer Project, and in particular about proposed narrowing of Abbey Lane from 36 feet to 28 feet. As you've heard, most of the people on our street are against that. Indeed, as Joe said, there are some people in favor, but more than 85% are against narrowing the street. So, there are some on both sides, but it's very off balance there. None of the property owners voiced any resistance to the proposed placement of the sewer upgrade. That's important. But we were quite frustrated about the announcement of the change in the street dimensions at a very late part of the planning process. I understand things change and so forth, and it's a difficult job. We appreciate the effort of the city staff dealing with all that. But it came up November 30th. Kind of a tough time of year to get things worked out with holidays and bad weather then and so forth. But we did start to talk to people in the neighborhood, and it became clear that most of them were against it. We've got a lot of bike traffic there, and we like the idea of a little more space between cars and the bikes and moving cars and so forth. Getting closer to each other is bound to lead to some troubles. We've addressed the parking at the Kiwanis Park on the east end of Abbey Lane, and we do appreciate that at least they've changed the plan to allow to leave the street widened there. But there are other reasons. Those are listed in the previous letter we sent to you four weeks ago. We don't wish to delay this project at all, but we wish you would consider our input and concerns and send out the bid without the stipulation to narrow the street or at least investigate it further. Now, one of our residents could not be here this evening. He was trying to be here, but has a kids' event up in U and I. A couple of things he was concerned about are whether this narrowing seems to be a cost-saving measure. It's not clear to most of us if it comes out to save actual money or not. And if you take the surface area for the driveways and so forth, that's over 20% of the eight-foot strip that would be saved by shaving it off the street. There's a lot of other concerns about that and whether we've shifted the cost of taking care of that area to...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one online or in person, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Harmson.
Second, Burgess.
All right, council discussion.
This obviously is in my district and my neighborhood, very, very close to where I live. So, this is really close to my heart. And I've heard, I know a lot of the people that live on this street, and I have been on that street many times. And I have a lot of concerns about this. Obviously, not concerns for the need for the new sewer line, although I do have concerns that it was quoted that it's going to promote development on the other side of Mormon Trek, the west side of Mormon Trek. But my concern is that this is of a detriment to those folks in the existing neighborhood on Abbey Lane, as one of the residents eloquently spoke about how, well, a couple of them did, that this is, when they bought this home, they've lived there many years, and they love this wide street. And I know we've heard from some of our council members about wide streets leading to speed. But obviously, it's technically a dead-end street. There isn't speeding there. These residents have not come to us and requested speed humps or a speed study. It's not a concern. So, what I'm trying to say is that I believe that it should be left as 36 feet. It just seems absurd to me to lessen a street that's been 36 feet all these years and has surrounding streets. We're told that Abra Avenue is 36 feet. Teg Drive, which is also very close, is 36 feet. And of course, there's Mormon Trek. It's very wide, I don't know how wide it is, but it's four lanes. There are wide streets around there. I just do not see the need at this time to decrease the width. And so, I appeal to my fellow councilors to listen to these constituents.
Thanks for your comments, Pauline. And thank you, everyone, for coming and for those who submitted their letter and the petition to us last month. This is hard because it's change. And everyone who lives in their neighborhood, you know, buys into what is there at the time that they buy into it. And our challenge up here is to be thinking about not just those of you who are going to be impacted right now, but the community down the road. And so, the, both literally and figuratively, in time and in space down the road. This street will be there for decades. And we have had a policy of consistently narrower streets in residential areas for a long time, for very good reasons. And I think, you know, what we're trying to provide here with this project is the opportunity for brand-new sidewalks, brand-new driveway aprons, brand-new pavement in the street itself, sod in the additional parking area. And I think that will be an enhancement for the neighborhood as well as the addition of street trees. And staff, please correct me if I'm misstating anything because I see some heads shaking there with the residents that there's not going to be new pavement. So, Joe, is that... can you maybe clarify?
Joe, you're going to have to come up to the microphone, please.
Thank you. So, all of the sidewalks are not being replaced.
Okay.
Only those sidewalks where the services would cross or were redoing the curb ramps. Much of the sidewalk will remain in the exact same place that it's in and the same condition that it's in.
Got it. So, the increase in the space is coming between the sidewalk and the road?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for that misunderstanding, and thank you for those of you who are paying better attention. I still am in favor of narrowing the street because it is, that is our policy and it is our plan. And I think if we want to stick with our commitment to climate action, if we want to reduce the impact on the environment of additional impervious surfaces, if we want to reduce the heat island effect, if we want to provide more green space that is already in the public right-of-way. This whole project is in the public right-of-way and easements that are already there. So, I think it is also one of those times, it's just really tough when, you know, we try to do a good thing and make sure people know what's going on, and then it's maybe, you know, it's hard to know when you get a postcard what all might be handled or discussed at that meeting. And it's on public property. And so, you know, our obligation is not to provide maximum parking on a public street, but to comply with our plans that have been created with a lot of public input over a lot of time and deliberation, and to try and stick with those because they're based on good, solid reasoning. I know that change is hard, and I know that narrowing the street would be difficult. But I am in favor of it because it is in align with our strategic plan and our climate action plan.
One of the things I looked at when I was looking at this was, you know, because I'm new, said that we have a city policy of 28 feet. So, I sort of tested that theory out. And indeed, what I found was in my neighborhood, neighborhoods around other parks in the city, around schools, streets were 28 feet or less. And just knowing what it's like living on my street is not a burden. In fact, the closest street to me that's 36 or right around that with is Scott Boulevard, which is a major thoroughfare with very wide lanes. Even some of the other sort of like muscatine is right around that 28 feet. So, that's actually a fairly decent width. And so, that's one of the things, and I agree with the points that Councilor Burgess made. And I get that change is not desirable and, you know, it can be upsetting. But again, the policy does make sense. And I think if Councilor Thomas was here, if I could channel him briefly, I think, you know, he would talk about the idea of the narrowing and the traffic calming is to prevent future problems, not necessarily always in response to an existing problem. I think that's a fair thing I've heard him say from up here from before. So, just for those reasons too, while I take, you know, into consideration everybody's input, I think that this makes sense as proposed at the 28-foot width.
The only thing that I would add is that I have been listening for the multiple times that your advocacy, you know, that you've done through letters as well as here in person multiple times. And I really have put myself in your position. What would it be like if I got a postcard and I wasn't quite sure of what it was, you know, indicating or that there were future things that came out? I would absolutely be upset. And you're going to hate me. But I also recognize, as Councilor Harmson and Councilor Burgess have said, there are, there's going to be parking on both sides still. It does go into a park. This is not going to be a major thoroughfare that's been narrowed so that people are going to continue to go speeding. I think that there's many components of this that do, they fit the plan. And going from 36 feet to 28, there's still parking on both sides. And I did write it down as a legitimate question, which maybe staff can answer. How does narrowing the street take away parking if there's parking on both sides? Does it?
There are many areas of the street that are restricted by code already. So, where there's crosswalks or curb ramps within five feet of hydrant, there are several hydrants, inside the intersections, the T-intersections, you can't park there, those are restricted already by code.
They're already there, right.
The only thing that we're signing as no parking will be the north side of Abbey between Dolan and Mormon Trek. And there'll be a small part of the first parcel just east of Mormon Trek on the south side that'll also be signed, no parking. And the reason for that is to make sure that people that are turning right off of Dolan and turning right off of Mormon Trek onto Abbey can make those movements safely. So, there's a process of laying out site triangles and figuring out where people can see. So, really, we're talking about two cars on the north side and not even a whole car length on the south side of Abbey, all the way on the far end by Mormon Trek, not down by the park at all.
Okay, thank you. Like Councilor Burgess. I appreciate the detailed answer. Anyway, I think my counselors have said why I'm in favor of this. I also do very much understand that you are not happy that you bought the houses where you did because of the street. But 28 feet, I truly, it is wide enough for parking on both sides, and it goes into a dead end. And yes, it's utilized because people love the park. I honestly think that this is a change that has to happen because it fits with the rest of how Iowa City is looking at its paved roads, how it has used them, how it has constructed them, and that this is in line with this. I fully understand they're not doing the narrowing for the sake of saying, let's get everything uniform. It's because there's this opportunity to put it in line with the strategic plan while also preparing for the future in the next decades by laying the sewer. So, I will be in favor of this.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments?
You can go.
Okay. Sure.
This is something that I am very conflicted on, and I probably won't have a decision until I absolutely have to make it. But I want to share kind of what's going through my mind. You know, I think one of the largest things that we struggle with in democracies is balancing the interests of individuals with the needs of the community. And the more we think about it, the more our consciousness as a country and as a community develops the needs of the planet. I think that throughout this process, the city has done a good job. Doesn't mean it couldn't be better. I think more contact and more, you know, ensuring that there is a constant line of communication and understanding on all parties about the direction of where the project is going is important, as well as the fact that we've taken into account, or pardon me, the staff has taken into account, a lot of the concerns of the staff has made it so that the end of the street is going to be, you know, maintaining a larger footprint to account for turning and more parking near the park. At the same time, you know, we have an obligation to be stewards of our community and do the things that you guys want us to do. So, we are, we do have a major conflict in that regard. You have unified your neighborhood in a truly commendable way to try to get something that is important to you done. And as an organizer, I can give you nothing but commendation for that. And I would ask that regardless of what happens today, you continue that communication with the city so that you can advocate for the goals of your neighborhood, and those things can be achieved. But as I understand it, our community has major goals towards addressing the climate crisis. Concrete is, I believe, the number-one producer of CO2 emissions in the modernized world. And that is a real concern of mine. I also share a lot of the concerns of the other councilors that are planning on voting in favor of this in terms of, you know, consistency with the rest of our priorities as well as the rest of the city's planning and the maintenance of the ability for folks to park. But I am left at this position of major conflict in terms of, is this the right thing to do for the community? Or is this going to sort of, you know, cause a major harm to folks in the neighborhood? And I suppose that's where I stand right now. It is really for me going to be something that I'm thinking about until we have to make the vote.
Yeah, so, one, this sewer project is a major project. We're talking about $3.4 million. And I want to say thanks to everyone that's been a part of ensuring that that process is done in the best way possible. I think I heard even the residents say that they have no concerns about that part of the project, which is amazing. I mean, that's what we're talking about majority here is the sewer... which is amazing. I mean, that's the, that's what we're talking about majority here is, uh, the sewer project. What I will say to the residents as I, I hear you loud and clear, I heard that there's 21 people that signed the petition. And those unified voices do resonate with me. Um, I, like councillor Taylor, these are our neighbors. I live on the west side. I love the west side. Um, but from where I sit, I have to look at the big picture and all of the picture. I have to hear the voices of the people that are before me. Mainly, you know, not in support of the narrowing of this street. And I know that there are some voices out there that, um, you know, say, um, you know, go ahead and narrow it. I also have to consider, and I'd say this a lot, the end in mind. Climate action is real. We are in a climate crisis and I understand we can rationalize and say there's only, you know, this is just a big part of, you know, a huge city. I, I hear that. I understand that. What we're doing as a city, um, is trying to be really, really conscientious of long-term and not only just now how that affects, um, our generations to come. And so it is a, it is a, it is a, um, it is a, a hard decision because when I see people before me that is advocating for something with such a unified voice, and then I have to, you know, step back and be non-biased. Um, I absolutely, uh, you heard Steve say, I've been in his basement. He's a great musician. I know you all already know that. Um, he's a phenomenal musician and, um, it's a great neighborhood. Absolutely. The, you know, but when I look at what is being proposed in the narrowing of this street, when I think about the end in mind, which is generations and generations from now, I, I can't help but to support, uh, this road going down at 28, um, from 36. So I will support this and this is not to say that I don't hear you all. I do hear you loud and clear and I do understand your concerns. With that, roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed as five to one. Okay. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved. Second.
Move by Burgess, seconded by Alter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Nine C is Willow Creek Trail Replacement. This is a resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Willow Creek Trail Replacement Project. Establish amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders and fix in time and place for receipt of bids. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And, um, let's see. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Tyler Olson. I'm with the city's engineering department.
Great.
And I'll get this presentation started. Okay. So that for, uh, for the discussion today here, this is the public hearing for the Willow Creek Trail Replacement Project. And this is a trail replacement, uh, for the existing Willow Creek Trail section that is running through Willow Creek Park and Kiwanis Park for the most part. It runs from Benton Street to the north and then runs all the way down to Willow Creek Drive, uh, down by the cul-de-sac there. And this also, this project also includes a spur trail that is off of Aberdeen Court. Uh, so largely this project is a remove and replace for the existing trail. Uh, right now, what's out there is an existing asphalt trail and given its condition, it's time for a replacement trail. And this trail's gonna be entirely made out of concrete as opposed to what is now asphalt. Uh, so it'll go back nearly in the same footprint as the existing trail. Uh, there's gonna be a couple of minor changes here and there to accommodate, uh, new, uh, just like ADA compliance. But for the most part, it's gonna be sitting in the same location. Uh, to kind of keep the trail, uh, area around Willow Creek and, uh, Park and Kiwanis Park, we're gonna be breaking this up into three major phases. So this would be like phase one would be remove the trail, replace the trail, then move on to the second phase and then so on and so forth as we go down. So we're trying to keep as many of the trails open as we can, but also the connecting trails to it as well, maintain pedestrian flow there's. And as part of this project, we're also looking at the sidewalk connections that go to, uh, the Willow Creek Trail. And these are at the intersections, uh, with Teague Drive and they include three different intersections. The first two at Flanagan Court and Woodbury Court, uh, these two are gonna be removed and replaced. And this is to facilitate ADA compliance. This is the American Disabilities Act. Uh, these curb ramps and the crosswalks are not meeting all the ADA standards. So what we're gonna do is as part of this project, as part of the trail connections, it'd be removed and placed back in the same footprint. So we're just updating the sidewalk and the slopes, uh, corrected. Uh, the one change there is gonna be at Aberdeen Court. Uh, currently there is no connection from the south side of Teague Drive that where the trail is located, uh, where the spur, uh, trail is located and to the north side where Aberdeen Court is at. So we're gonna add a sidewalk crosswalk at that location. And as part of this, uh, construction project, each of the intersections that are going to be reconstructed will be done at half at a time. So it'll be taking out half of the intersection, um, remove and replace, and then go to the other side of the intersection, remove and replace. So that way we're still maintaining, uh, vehicle flow to each of those neighborhoods. How this project relates to the strategic plan is, uh, largely with the mobility part of the impact areas. And some of the strategies that are being addressed with this project, there is the design and maintain and complete streets that are comfortable and safe for all users. So again, this kind of reflects back to the improving the sidewalk connections. So that way they're ADA compliant and then also adding a street sidewalk crossing, um, at Aberdeen Court. And then the other strategy that applies to this project would be growing and prioritizing the bike pedestrian accommodations. So right now this, this trail is fairly popular with people in the neighborhood. And the condition of the trail, um, has prompted a number of complaints and given the condition of the trail, we deem that it, the trail needs to be removed and replaced. They're, uh, trying to do repair work or patching is just not gonna yield the results that we're gonna be looking for. Uh, getting to a little bit of the financial aspects of the project, uh, we're estimating the, uh, construction cost is gonna be about $720,500. And the funding is gonna be coming out of the city's capital projects fund. For scheduling, um, if fall goes to plan, uh, we're looking at issuing bid documents tomorrow uh, for contractors to, uh, place bids on. Uh, we're looking at a bid opening on the end of this month on the 28th. And then, uh, looking at a scheduling, a ward if all the bits, uh, come in as, as, um, we get good bids for that, be on April 4th. And overall, we're looking at a construction timeframe between May and September of this year for doing all the work. And then we're looking at as a final completion date sometime at the end of October this year.
All right. Any questions?
Sorry, Tyler. I did have one, one really quick clarifying question. Um, I understand, I think with that connection that's going north to cross onto Aberdeen, I think I heard you say crosswalk. Are these gonna be marked or just the curb ramps and like?
It'd be just the curb ramps. It won't have the, the painted markings.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Say no one online or in person. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Dunn.
Second. Taylor.
All right. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed as six to zero. Item nine D is library parking. Ordinances amending Title IX and Title Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter Four and Title Parking Regulations to return library parking to a 20-minute limit. This is second consideration and staff has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Move by Taylor?
Second. Burgess.
Seconded by Burgess. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Say no one in person or online. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passed as six to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved. Dunn.
Second. Alter.
Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion passed as six to zero. Item nine E, Ukraine Resolution. Resolution and continues to put a Ukraine sovereignty one year following the illegal and moral invasion of Ukraine by the Russian military, calling for the immediate withdrawal of Russian forces and for peace in Ukrainian sovereign territory. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Dunn.
Second. Alter.
All right. Move by Dunn, seconded by Alter. We're gonna have comments by councillor Dunn at this time.
So I'd, uh, I'd first like to thank my colleagues up here, uh, for their work on their advocacy with this issue. Uh, last year passing a resolution, uh, I believe it was 8022, uh, supporting the Ukrainian people in their fight against the, the Russian regime. Uh, and express also why this issue is so important to me and, uh, why, uh, I, I believe that we believe, uh, it is important to our community in this moment. Um, over the last year, I've spent a lot of time with folks in the community, uh, and paying attention to the news. And shortly after the invasion of Ukraine, uh, in 2022, I was approached by a, a young Ukrainian woman who was asking me why certain government agencies or other types of entities weren't speaking up about the issues. Uh, this is particularly a student, uh, who at the time, when it was a very, very lonely time to be a Ukrainian, when the world thought that Kiev would fall in three days, uh, they felt very alone and very much, uh, abandoned by lack of voices. Uh, so while this is simply a statement calling for what is just, we do have folks in our community who are directly affected by this, whose, uh, family have a, a legacy uh, and, and history in Ukraine, whose family are in Ukraine, who's studied in, who grew up in Ukraine. And ensuring that those people understand that this is an issue, that we're not just going to let go by another year, just be another tragedy, um, is something that I think is, is very much in line with what our, our community values are. I think also understanding the gravity of this moment and understanding, uh, the real atrocity. And I wanna say a content warning right now, uh, for anyone that's watching in the room or online about what is really happening in Ukraine, uh, is important. Rape, murder constituting genocide, uh, murder of civilians, prisoners of war, deliberate state-funded and sanctioned torture of children all across Ukraine. Shipping children to Siberia into reeducation camps. Regardless of how you feel about why this war began, it's wrong. What's happening there is wrong. And our community has already stood up for them once. And I believe it's important that we continue to stand up and to show people, uh, across the states, across the world and our community, uh, that this is not something that we will sit by on. In addition, I think it's also important that we use this as an opportunity to understand that tragedy and the loss of freedom and democracy is not something that can only happen in Ukraine or in other places. While this conflict is very much about freedom and it is about democracy, um, it is also a lesson of the power democracy has to unite the world, uh, and the necessity of us maintaining it at home. One of the things that I have been keeping with me, uh, for the most of this last year is a little pamphlet that I got from a local antique shop called Artifacts. People are probably familiar. It's called "The Documents on the Freedom Train," which is a little weird name. Um, it's from 1947 from the American Heritage Foundation. And I find that faced with a consistent rise of authoritarianism, both in our country and across the world, I think that the nine promises of a good citizen that are on the back of this pamphlet from 1947, right after the fall of fascism in Europe, I think that they're important to recommend or important to remember, especially in these times. And I'd like to share them. One, I will vote at all elections. I will inform myself on candidates and issues and will use my greatest influence to see that honest and capable officials are elected. I will accept public office, office when I can serve my community or my country thereby. Two, I will serve on a jury when asked. Three, I respect and obey the laws. I will assist public officials in preventing crime in the courts and giving evidence. Four, and I find this one a little bit funny, I will pay my taxes understandably, if not cheerfully. Five, I will work for peace but will dutifully accept my responsibilities in times of war and will respect the flag. Six, in thought, expression, and action, at home, at school, and in all of my contacts, I will avoid any group prejudice based on class, race, or religion. Seven, I will support our system of free public education by doing everything I can to improve the schools in my own community. Eight, I will try to make my community a better place in which to live. And nine, I will practice and teach the principles of good citizenship right here in my own, in my own home. And remember, freedom is everybody's job. I think that these lessons, while maybe a little bit dated in some, uh, some places and lack some of the more progressive, uh, ideas that we, we typically are finding ourselves in here in our community, uh, serve as an incredible reminder, uh, in the context of what's happening in Ukraine and the tragedies all across the world, that protecting democracy, preserving freedom, does come at a cost. And I would call on my, uh, my colleagues here, uh, to stand together and, and vote for this resolution to recognize the sovereignty of the Ukrainian people and call for the withdrawal of Russian forces.
I object to this because I am a Ukrainian-American and I know what's going on out there. And the US actually supported the coup in 2014.
One second, I'm gonna open up public.
There are three groups of people in Ukraine, not just one. We supported the fascist group in 2014.
One second, I'm gonna open up public comment.
I don't believe in this particular, uh, this particular idea.
One, one.
I think this is hegemony. I think this is US imperialism.
One second.
And I think this has to stop. And the more we escalate, the more that we're gonna have the chance of having nuclear war, more people in Ukraine. And you have more.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up.
And I'll tell you right now.
I'm gonna open it up.
There is no business out there as if Russia had business in, in Mexico or Cuba.
I respectfully ask you to hold off.
Canada, we have no business. And you want to talk?
I respectfully ask you to hold off.
He isn't authoritarian as well. He's not just a flower in, in the desert. I apologize for coming out here, but I can't stand by and listen to this. People out there, you need to look through and see what this is all about. I appreciate your listening to me. I know that I'm against the rules here. I'll take my, uh, slap on the wrist. Please do not go along with this. The US is, is basically in on this. It's a fascist group that took over Ukraine. It's a rogue government. They overthrew a democratically elected president. We talk about voting, they voted. People in Donbass wanted that president. They basically chased him out with threats to his life and that's what happened. So the US is pushing and pushing and pushing to take over Ukraine and to attack Russia. And if you don't know this, you don't know what's going on in Ukraine. And I'm sorry for being so emotional, but this is very close to home.
All right. Any questions from counsel to councillor Dunn?
No questions, but, uh, thank you for, for.
We'll, we'll get to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Yes. Questions at this time. Sorry. Yes. All right. I'm gonna open up the public. All right, I'm going to open up the public comment. Time. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Okay, seeing no one, council discussion.
Just to say thank you, I was happy to work with you on drafting this, and as I was happy to work with our former colleague, Counselor Weiner, when she was here a year ago, and did such a nice job putting together our original eloquent and extremely well-done resolution. I do think there is value to this, especially in a day and age where we do see Kremlin propaganda and Putin-esque propaganda that does sort of creep into the conversation. So it's, it's good to let the people of, to remind one year into this conflict, to let the people of Ukraine know that different bodies around the world are still steadfast in their support. So, thank you.
Yes, one additional comment that I would have would be, I have a team of students from the University of Iowa who worked with me to put this resolution together in a good and concise way, couple of members of which are here, Jane Hollish and Nolan Hanson. So I'd like to extend my thanks to them for their assistance with this.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Absolutely.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item number 10 is council appointments. 10A is Airport Zoning Commission, Iowa City Representative. Airport, there is one vacant city to fill a six-year term, January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2027. And council discussion.
I think this was just one applicant for this one.
It was just the one, but I actually quite enjoyed reading the application. It's very, well, no, very interesting background that I think the notion of being able to apply some of the background this candidate has, albeit in a slightly different, I was going to say genre that shows my background, but you know, to be able to apply, thinking about land use and whatnot in service of sort of betterment of how the airport commission can conduct itself, I think works well.
So it sounded like we have a majority for appointing Anthony Gentile to the Airport Zoning Commission. Can I get a motion to appoint, please?
So moved, Harmsen.
Second, Dunn.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Item number 11 is announcements of vacancies new. 11A, Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacant city to fill an expired term upon appointment through December 31st, 2024. And applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Alter.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Item 12 is announcements of vacancies previous. 12A is going to be Civil Service Commission, one vacant city to fill an expired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 14th, 2023. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacant city to fill an expired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacant city to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn Avenue, one vacant city to fill an expired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And we are on to item number 13, City Council Information.
I was excited to see the invitation for the South District Market Grand Opening. I think we have a meeting before that happens, but I thought I'd mention it now and remind people about that, March 28th. It's just so exciting that the South District, I'm so impressed with, with how far they've come in the last few years and the hard work that each and every one of them has done. And I'm just really excited for this market because I've gone to the ones in the summer where they had in the parking lot, and this has sort of developed from that. And in fact, I commented to Angie Jordan at one of them that, oh, it'd be great to have, have something that's inside. And she said, well, and here it is. And it's going to be fun as well as, I'll just go ahead and mention her. I hear that Roy San Porter is going to have, one of the cubbyholes, one of the vendors is going to be her and her soul food. So that's exciting to look forward to that and many of the other ones that will be a part of that also. So congratulations to them.
Supervisor Porter will be having her open house on this Saturday, and I believe that time, that's what I was trying to look for.
Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't see.
It starts at noon.
It said 12:00 noon. That's what I was trying to confirm when my phone went off.
I've got something, I've got a couple things. First, Wednesday, March 8th, tomorrow, the Johnson County United Nations Association is going to be holding an event in my neighborhood over by Mercer Park, the Night of a Thousand Dinners, in recognition of, I believe it's Women's History Month. Tickets are $25, $10 for students. You're going to be seeing stuff from Grow Johnson County, Field to Family, and benefiting Great Plains Action and the like. So I'm going to be there, would love to see everyone else. In addition, one of the things that I spoke about when, I guess I came before you during the appointment process, was doing office hours. And so, starting next week, biweekly, I'm going to be hosting office hours for members of the community to come in and speak with me about whatever their issues are at my office little brick from about 5:00 to 6:30, 7:00. So folks can join me there if they want to air their grievances or otherwise. So would love to see folks.
Speaking of which, Counselor Burgess and I had a listening post la, just last week?
Yes.
Yes, just last week. And for the, thank you to the people that came out and spoke with us. A lot of the discussion revolved around affordable housing. We had a member of the local Habitat for Humanity there, and so we got a really nice update on some ongoing and upcoming projects. And discussing ways that, you know, that we, the city and Habitat have worked together in different projects and different upcoming things. So it was, it was a really nice conversation. And those are listening posts. I know that just kind of promoting for my fellow counselors who are doing the upcoming ones to the public, really nice time. I know we had one person come and said, so what's the agenda? And we were like, whatever you want to talk about, that's the agenda. So it is nice to have that sort of opportunity. And Counselor Burgess, I probably have some more stuff to add, perhaps, maybe?
Oh, that was great, great summary, thank you. And also with the Habitat for Humanity, just kind of following up on that, they have a open house on Thursday afternoon over on Indigo Drive, which is in the South District in Iowa City for a home that they've just completed. And there's a dedication of that house then on Saturday, the 11th, at 10:00 AM. So 2408 Indigo Drive is, and we are invited to that as well, plan to attend. And I also just want to take a moment to reflect and thank you all for our discussions in the last couple of meetings. I feel like we've been really respectful and productive. The item we had earlier, I thought, was just an example of the value of our strategic plan and the conversations that we've had around that to kind of help us understand and acknowledge that bigger picture sometimes. So I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge the clarity that I've found, I think particularly recently with the processes that we've gone through in adopting that and just thinking about things, big picture. So thank you all for that.
I just want to say a large shout out to successful City of Literature Festival that was last weekend. And we have some amazing writers in the community who are beginning in the first grade and going, and are not even yet in high school. I got to go to the Write Out Loud contest, and it was incredibly cool and humbling, to tell you the truth, because I got to pass out the awards. And to listen to the kids sit there and read their work, it was awesome. That's all I got to say, is like, we have a really strong community of writers and, and kids who are sort of in there to make their mark. And there were some who were like two peats, three peats of having gotten recognition. And I think the main thing is that the City of Literature did a great job of saying, writing isn't just this rarefied thing, it's for everybody. And so it was, it's just amazing to, and each winner was, would the author come up? And it was just the respect that came from just the common language of writing and of putting it forward and putting yourself on the page. It was really, really cool. So it was an awesome job.
Just want to say thanks to everybody that's been paying attention to everything that's happening at the State House. There's been a lot of advocacy going on. And there's a lot of things that this city also advocate for, and so thanks to our team that does that. Tomorrow, Deputy City Manager Reven and I, we will be heading to Des Moines, and so we'll be spending most of the day there. So there's a lot of work to be done, a lot of advocacy, advocacy to be had. Also want us to take a step back and just look at some of the positive things that we have within our community, because I think sometimes we can be so bogged down with some of the bad things that are happening, that we don't agree with or that we are really burdened by. And in this moment, yes, we need to fight like hell, I'll say it. But I think, you know, there needs to also be a little time for some self-care, and I would just encourage people to do a little bit of that if you're feeling that you need it. Other than that, we will go to item number 14, Reports on Items from City Staff, City Manager's Office.
Not tonight, Mayor, thank you.
City Attorney.
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right, and our City Clerk?
Yes, I have something. I just want to mention that the Community Police Review Board is going to have their annual community forum on April 20th at 5:30, and it'll be held at the Library Meeting Room A.
Thank you. All right, item number 15 is adjournment. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Move by Taylor, seconded by Alter. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.